Okay, let's get started here. Let's close the attendance check in. And as Julie said, this is not like an official vote for anything. So don't worry if you didn't get your vote in in time. It's really just a test vote. Okay, so while we're waiting for the screens to go by to confirm that your votes got registered. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling Arlington's annual town meeting session seven to order on Monday, May 16th, 2022. So. Let's get started with the Star Spangled Banner. Great, thank you. So I have a few opening remarks before we get to business. First, to answer a logistical question that's been coming up, town meeting will not meet on Memorial Day, which is May 30th, two weeks from today. Next, I sent a letter to the TMM email list this weekend, offering some details and context for my decision to institute a straw poll for assessing interest in terminating debate. We're going to continue that practice tonight. As I mentioned in my letter, going forward, the straw poll will not trigger automatically every 15 minutes of debate, but will trigger no sooner than every 15 minutes. And ultimately, the decision on whether to terminate debate or continue debate is up to town meeting members. I sent another letter this morning clarifying my policy for accepting materials for distribution to the TMM email list and posting to the annotated warrant. Please review the updated policy. Long story short, materials need to be submitted by appropriate town officials, committee chairs, or town meeting members. So if a member of the general public wishes to submit material, it must be cosigned by and submitted by a town meeting member. Next, I've consulted with town council about the requirement of cycling through screens to show votes. It's complicated, but there's no requirement about showing these screens on votes to terminate debate. So I'm going to save us some time and not show those screens when we're voting to terminate debate. Also, I've worked with the developer of the virtual town meeting platform to track certain timings during the meeting, like when a speaker starts and finishes during debate. I intend to use this information going forward to help me identify speakers in the queue who have spoken less frequently or for a shorter amount of time compared to speakers ahead of them, so that I can promote the speakers who've gotten less airtime. It's going to be a challenge to incorporate this information live during the meeting, but I'll do my best. And if we get a string of speakers who are all on the same side of a debate, I may ask for raised hands in Zoom for anyone in the speaking queue who wishes to speak on the other side. I've already done this a couple of times and will continue to do so as needed. Next, I want to remind everyone that the proper term is select board, not the Board of Selectmen. Town meeting voted to change the name of the board at town meeting in 2018, Article 20, which passed 195 to six. I appreciate that old habits die hard. But for new members who don't have the habit of using the outdated term, it sounds like an exclusionary relic of the past, because it is. So please remember to use the inclusive term select board. And if I fail to correct someone who uses the old term, feel free to remind me through the Q and A in Zoom. And finally, I want to pass along the sad news that Elsie Fiore, who was a town meeting member for 56 years, from 1962 to 2017, passed away Saturday night at the age of 95. I wish to offer condolences to Ms. Fiore's family, including her son Peter, who serves on town meeting today. So please join me in a moment of silence for Elsie and her significant contributions and service to Arlington. Great, thank you. Okay, so let's move on now to the swearing in. We're actually not going to do that live in the meeting to save some time. If there is anyone still who, any new town meeting members who have not taken the oath of office, not been sworn in yet, please contact the town clerk Julie Brazil at your earliest convenience. And I now recognize the chair of the select board, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all this meeting has set forth in the warrant for the special for for town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 18th, 2022, at 8:00 PM.
Okay, that's for the annual town meeting, of course. And any seconds?
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Foscat for the motion moved by Mr. Diggins. Let's enable raise hands and zooms for any in zoom for any objections to that. Okay, seeing no objections. If we don't finish tonight, we will continue on Wednesday, May 18th at 8:00 PM. And now I want to call for any announcements or resolutions. You can raise hand on Zoom.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Charles Foscat, Precinct 10, Chair of the Finance Committee. I would like to request an administrative change to budget number 16, the zoning border appeals budget. There's a little notation on the left side of the page about a full-time equivalence for three years and then the full-time equivalent in the current year. And the, it turns out that the
Hold on one second, Mr. Foscat. Can we bring up that on the display that so that everyone can see what Mr. Foscat is referring to? This is item 16 in the budgets, correct? It says appendix B in the finance committee. Since 16, this should be on page. B5, I believe.
Yeah, B5, yes.
There it is. Sorry.
B6.
Oh, B6. Go ahead, Mr. Foscat.
Yes, thank you, sir. So under the detail of personal services, says principal clerk and typist, and it says point four nine, point four nine, point four nine, and point eight nine. So the point eight nine is correct. The three prior figures should read point two nine.
Okay, so it should be point two nine, point two nine, point two nine, point eight nine. Okay, we can make that change administrable. Ms. Brazil, you can make that change in the clerk's records. Okay. Okay, do we have any other announcements or resolutions at this point? You can raise hands in Zoom if you do. Okay, seeing none. I now call for reports that are ready to be received.
Mr. Moderator, move that Article 3 be removed from the table.
Okay, so Mr. Foscat's moved moved to remove the table. We have a second from Ms. Brazil. Any objections in Zoom? I see we have no objections. So Article 3 is now before us. So we are now ready to receive reports. If anyone has any reports, please raise your hands in Zoom. And I see Mr. Barr has his hand raised. Go ahead, please.
I thank you, Moderator Christina, Joe Barr, Precinct 5, and also the co-chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So I would like to provide a brief update from the Master Plan Implementation Committee based on our report to town meeting. Okay, very much. So it has been, as it has been for the last several years, a busy year for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we are continuing to make progress on the the work of that group. It definitely demonstrates how much work has been accomplished to implement the master plan. So I'll provide some brief highlights from the committee's report. And also clarify a little bit regarding some of the warrant articles. Since the since the master plan was adopted in 2015, we've been spotlighting articles which advance the master plan's goals and objectives since 2017. Some of the highlights that I'll talk about illustrate where the committee had consensus and articles that advanced the plan, which is really the role of the committee with respect to articles that are being considered by town meeting. The select board endorsed and the MPIC approved Connect Arlington, which is the town's long-range transportation plan to ensure that all residents, workers, business owners, and visitors are provided with safe, reliable, and multimodal transportation that meets the needs of all ages and abilities. They've actions described below advance key recommendations of Connect Arlington, which has also taken over from the original transportation and mobility recommendations of the master plan. A sort of a more full development of those needs. Department of Planning, Community Development, or DPCD, began the Minuteman Bike Way planning study to look at opportunities for safety improvements, improvements to connectivity of the bike way, ensure that multiple modes can utilize the bike way. The ARB and the Select Board adopted the Housing Production Plan, which will help the town to achieve housing goals to meet a range of housing needs, concurrent and projected housing demand. The town also continued to work with the Stratton School and Neighborhood on a mast dot safe routes to school project. In addition, the town expanded the regional bike share program into Arlington in 2020 for the master plan goal. That's the Blue Bike System. A community survey exploring options for an additional two stations to extend the network through the center and towards Arlington Heights was administered in April 2022. And as I think town meeting members know, DPCD is requesting appropriation of $100,000 to support two years of operations maintenance and assistance to income eligible users of the Blue Bikes Bike Share System under Article 60. CBD, CB, CDBG, and CPA funds are being requested at this town meeting will help advance future town projects, including a study of Coots Hollow and a feasibility study from Al Gilboa. CPA funds for the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust would help jumpstart trust initiatives in advance multiple plans. The Trust Action Plan, the Housing Plan, and the Fair Housing Action Plan. The MPIC's MPIC zoning bylaw working group was busy reviewing and providing feedback on numerous zoning warrant articles for this town meeting, including Article 33, Article 34, Article 35, and Article 36. In addition, the MPIC's Cultural Historic Resources Working Group initiated a community-wide archaeological reconnaissance survey and a documentation project of 20 town-owned properties and landscapes, both projects funded by CPA. The town, really importantly, is also finalizing an open space and recreation plan update. Is continuing to work on public land management plan, which will help address longstanding maintenance and conservation protection, asset management of our town-owned natural resources. Again, both those projects are funded by CPA. Lastly, over this past year, the community center project was completed and the town yard or DPW yard project began, which will help to update and renovate town-owned facilities in alignment with the master plan and maintaining critical town resources. Finally, I just wanted to clarify the our the MPIC's action on a few warrant articles relating to the to zoning issues is, as noted in the minutes of one of our meetings, we voted to endorse Articles 28, 29, and 41, which are all related to which, which, which the endorsement meeting that they sort of conform to the goals of the master plan. It's not a recommendation of action or no action or anything like that. It's just sort of a saying that we believe that these are consistent with the master plan goals. Importantly, regarding warrant Article 38, it also is reflected in the meeting minutes. The MPIC took no position on this article. The MPIC, as I said, does not make formal recommendations to the ARB. And the email sent to the ARB that indicated no action did not actively represent the endpoint of the MPIC's discussion. With that, I thank you very much and turn it back to.
Thank you. Yeah, we are at the four-minute mark. Thank you. So thank you for that update on the report, and that's MPIC report to town meeting. MPIC is the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Do we have any any other reports that are ready to be received? If you do, please raise your hand in Zoom. Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Moderator. Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Second, we have a motion by Mr. Foscat to lay Article 3 upon the table, so we'll hold it for another time. And a second by Ms. Brazil, any objections in Zoom to laying Article 3 on the table to be taken up later? So we can see, receive more reports in the future. Seeing none. I declare the vote unanimous, and Article 3 is now on the table. So we now have Article 50 back before us. Article 50 is where we left off last Wednesday. We finished the discussion of the education budget. And let's see. And so just to clarify, just where where this is headed and how the process is going to work, especially for those who are not familiar. After we finished debating the budgets that were held at last Wednesday night's meeting, we will take one vote on the entirety of Article 50, which covers all the budgets and funds listed in Appendix B of the Finance Committee Report. There is no line item veto on these budgets. You cannot vote down a single budget, let alone vote down a single item in one of those budgets. Second, there were some notices of reconsideration given for holding a budget for debate and termination of debate on the education budget. According to the handbook, Town Meeting Time, moving the previous question, which we typically refer to more colloquially as moving to terminate debate, cannot be reconsidered according to the rules. Furthermore, the member who requested that notice of reconsideration did not vote on the prevailing side of that motion. So the request is denied. As for the request to hold a budget, since we're already at the stage of discussing budgets, having completed discussion of the education budget, I will not entertain retroactive holds, nor do I believe that notices of reconsideration apply to such holds or lack of holds. Lastly, if you have any questions about a budget, please be mindful about whether it's a question that would be more appropriate to ask offline to the town manager or department head rather than taking up town meeting's time, especially if it's something that you're personally curious about, but might not be particularly relevant to other residents or town meeting members. So let's try to be respectful of everyone's time. Okay, so let's not. So the next budget that we had held for debate was budget number one, the Finance Committee Budget. And that was held by Mr. Reblak. So can we bring up, so do we have, can we? I guess, I guess we don't need to bring up the specific termination of debate on that until we get to that point. Or we run out of speakers. So I'll give Mr. Reblak the first shot at this. And I'll do this for each of the budgets. Whoever was the first person in line to hold a budget, I'll, you know, I'll be happy to call you up. So so let's open up the queue for debate or discussion on the Finance Committee Budget. And we can start with Mr. Reblak, who held it from the list of budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Steve Reblak, Precinct 1. I just have, my questions have to do with the budget in general, and I thought the Finance Committee Budget would be the best context for asking them. I hope that's appropriate, and I will be trying to, I will try to be mindful and respectful of the the meeting's time. So when it comes to Arlington's budget, we typically ask questions about, we talk about spending and for good, for good reason. I'd like to ask a question or two about the other side of the balance sheet, income, and more specifically, new growth. Mr. Moderator, is there someone here who could provide a brief explanation or definition of what new growth is?
Uh, let's see. Let's start with Mr. Foscat, since this is the Finance Committee Budget. If not, we can, we can go to Mr. Chapdaling, perhaps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator Charles Foscat, Precinct 10. Now, new, new growth is expansion of the asset base of the town based on new building or renovations or improvements in buildings that are contained in mostly in the real estate tax base.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foscat and Mr. Moderator. I'm wondering, how does new growth affect the our budget deficit and the need for overrides?
Mr. Foscat, can you field that question?
Well, if you look at the five-year plan, the back of the appendix D, the back of the Finance Committee Report, you see a line item called Property Tax E. And that's a revenue item. And when that increases from year to year, it will increase basically for two or three reasons. One is that there's a typical permitted two and a half percent increase in the tax base on existing assets. And there may also be new growth. In other words, assets that are taxed that weren't existing in the prior fiscal year.
Okay, and could I, would it be fair to say that if Arlington, you know, new growth would either reduce the amount of deficit in any given year or perhaps reduce the frequency of overrides?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason I bring this up is I was reading through our public annual financial report, which says that we had point seven two percent new growth this year. And the, you know, which happens to be lower than any of us, any of our comparable communities. So we came in last. And it's also well below the state average of 1.6%. So it's, I guess, compared to our peers, we're growing quite slowly. So, Mr. Moderator, I'm wondering why our level of new growth is so low? And if there are bylaws or policies or zoning that generally inhibit new growth in Arlington?
Mr. Foscat, do you want to take a?
It's quite simple. We don't have any more land. It's, it's where we're land constrained. And the towns that have high rates of new growth have relatively speaking vast land where, you know, new lab space can be put in or new manufacturing facilities. Think Fort Devens out in the, in the 495. You know, when they closed the military base there, they left hundreds and hundreds of acres to be expanded into new development, and that creates new tax income. That's new growth.
I was actually thinking more along the lines of, say, Watertown or Waltham or, you know, Medford, other communities that are also land constrained, but still seem to be finding ways to to expand and build their tax base. So to just
I do want to keep this in scope, and we're kind of
No, 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 no. So I'll just, so I would just want to just point out that, you know, in terms of, you know, the need for overrides and, you know, the need to control spending, there is another half to the budget equation. And that, you know, while Arlington may never hope to attract the amount of commercial investment that, you know, like, say, a Cambridge or a Somerville or a Watertown or Waltham might get a little bit, some new growth might help take some of the edge off the overrides. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
That's, that's starting pretty far in scope, but since you're done, let's take Mr. Moore next.
Christopher Moore, Precinct 14, pass.
Okay, let's take Mr. Levy next. And name and precinct. Let's see, is Mr. Levy able to unmute? So I'm seeing that he's not here, it appears. Okay, let's in the interest of kind of spreading the wealth of speaking time, let's go to Ms. Hyam.
Leba Hyam, Precinct 15, pass.
Okay. And let's take Mr. Miller, and then if there's time, we'll go back to Mr. Tremblay. Is Mr. Miller there?
Apologize, multiple mutes. Matthew Miller, Precinct 11. So my thought on this issue was kind of aligned with what we previously heard. I think it is appropriate to consider that, you know, the overrides are a little bit more than other towns. And also that I think that, you know, if there are other towns that are land restricted like ours is, what's the difference? I'll leave it at that for open discussion. If anybody has any comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's take Mr. Tremblay.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. I'm not quite sure how my name got on the waiting to speak list. Maybe it's left over from the school budget. I hope we'll have opportunities to speak on other budgets later on, but I have nothing to say about the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Let's take Mr. McCabe next.
Precinct 2, I stand to terminate debate on Article 50 and all matters before.
Mr. McCabe, for all the budgets or for the Finance Committee Budget?
The Finance.
Okay, so we have a motion to terminate debate on the Finance Committee Budget by Mr. McCabe. Do we have a second? Yeah, I assume the seconds are in reference to that, our second from Mr. Palmer. So let's bring up a vote to terminate debate on the Finance Committee Budget. Okay, so we should still have the enforced waves of voting in effect. So if you see a message that your turn to vote has not come up yet, just please sit tight. And you'll, you'll get a chance. I'll be keeping an eye on how many votes have been cast and how many outstanding votes there are. So to make sure that we're getting almost everybody able to vote, if not everyone. And so we're voting here on whether vote yes if you wish to terminate debate on the Finance Committee Budget. Vote no if you want to continue debate on the Finance Committee Budget. And just for folks waiting to vote, or if you've already voted. I just want to point out, like, there may be more kind of jumping around out of order of the speaking queue tonight of folks that I select to speak. And that is because I'm consulting kind of like some of the historical data we have from previous meetings of, you know, speaking times, durations, frequencies, and trying to kind of spread that wealth of speaking time. So. So we have about 220 voters with about a couple of dozens still outstanding. Only six voters who haven't voted who have been or six members who haven't voted who are have been recently active in the portal. So try to get your votes in if you can. Let's just give folks another 15 seconds. And 10 seconds. And you could always get your vote through the Q and A if you're having trouble with the portal. Five seconds. And let's close voting on termination of debate of the Finance Committee budget in Article 50. And just a reminder that we will not be cycling through the voting screens for votes to terminate debate. So motion passes 201 and the affirmative, 24 negative. So debate is terminated on the Finance Committee budget. So let's now move on to budget number three, the Town Manager Budget. And the first person I had who had raised hands was Mr. Mar. So can we bring up Mr. Mar? Oh, it's been a while since I've seen that screen. Okay, do we, to be clear, the speaking queue?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Mar, Precinct 14. By the way, I'm pleased to be participating in my 48th Annual Town Meeting.
Oh, congratulations.
Thanks. As we know, Mr. Chapdalen is leaving the town, and I think the town is much better off for his tenure and much poorer for his leaving. But my concern is not so much to talk about Adam, but it is to talk about the salary line item, which has troubled me for some time. It is extremely difficult to find professional town managers. And as we know, town manager position is extremely important to having a strong manager form of government in Arlington. There are at least three other communities surrounding us that are seeking professional management positions. I'm not sure. I think that's Cambridge, Lexington, and perhaps one other. But the, as the town manager's position is, the hiring is not subject to the pay and classification plan. It's subject to a particular provision of the general laws, which permits the Select Board to negotiate a contract on various salary and benefit items. And I've been concerned about the, the low figure that the town manager's position has received over the years. And I just would like to get the, perhaps the Select Board could weigh in and give us an update on where we are with regard to the research on for a new town manager. I know we have a consulting firm. But again, my concern is that in the future that the Select Board not be reticent with regard to providing adequate compensation, because I think that's absolutely critical to getting a new town manager, be he or she, to fill this extremely important position. So if I could, through you, Mr. Moderator, ask the Select Board where we are with regard to that new selection of a town manager.
Sure, sure. Mr. Diggins, do you want to take a step with that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Moderator, and thanks for the question, Mr. Mar. So at tonight's meeting, we have, we, I was authorized, meaning by my colleagues, me, to enter into negotiations with Mr. Poole to potentially function as the acting appointed town manager. That could potentially last me the, the remainder of Mr. Chapdalen's term, most likely not. But we are in the process. We have hired a search firm and we are in the process of starting to engage them. I am meeting with the Director of HR tomorrow in order to discuss the details of starting, taking the next steps in that process. And so that's where we are, you know. I am, I'm willing to entertain a follow-up, but that would be through the moderator.
Anything else, Mr. Mark?
No, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. I apologize. There was some confusion about the, the speaking queue. I think we had leakage of speakers from from Wednesday night's meeting, because it's all under the same article. The budgets work a little differently from most articles. So apologize for that. We'll try to get that right going forward by clearing the speaker queue in between each of the budget discussions. Let's take Mr. Kepline next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. While Mr. Chaplain still might be available to town meeting, is, can I ask him a question?
You can ask a question, which I, which I made forward to him, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So for a long time, I've been concerned about headcount growth in the town budget and the shortage of capital spending. You know, even just simple things like street lighting or street sweeping or maintaining, you know, street paint.
We'll get to the capital budget in Article 51, but if you can keep it focused to the town manager.
Yeah. I'd like to know that why, while other towns did a lot of layoffs in early 2020, Arlington did none. Other towns, people laid off, especially lower-level ones were able to
Yes, let me just interrupt there. So as far as like, so we're getting out, that's outside of scope now, because we're talking about the budget for this year, not, not going back to 2020 from two years.
Okay, well, why have we added 12 new positions using ARPA funds? And what's going to pay for them when the ARPA funds exhaust are exhausted? Other towns used ARPA funds to rehire laid-off workers, but Arlington didn't do that. So they saved money, but Arlington taxpayers kept paying and paying. So what's going to happen with these ARPA-funded positions?
Sure. So, Mr. Chapdalen, do you have an answer for Mr. Kepline's question about the use of ARPA funds for, for new positions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Chapdalen, Town Manager. I'm not immediately familiar with 12 positions being funded by ARPA, as suggested by the Speaker. There are a small number, I believe, two positions, at least for town departments, being funded through ARPA dollars. And we've made it clear for both those town departments that are receiving staff funding for, from ARPA, as well as some nonprofits in the community that have received ARPA funding, who will be utilizing for staffing, that it cannot be expected to be continued after the expiration of the eligibility for the use of ARPA funds, which is December 31st, 2024. So we've made it very clear that we understand there are needs to be met stemming from our continued recovery from the pandemic. However, we cannot expect to be able to continue those positions after the expiration or the full usage of ARPA funding.
And anything else, Mr. Kepline?
No, I guess that's the only answer I'm getting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Foskett next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Foskett, Precinct 10, and Chair of the Finance Committee. I want to join in the auditory comments about Mr. Chapdalen's service. I think they're well deserved. I'd also like to comment on the prior speaker's exhortation of the Select Board to focus on the size of the salary of the town manager. And I, I hope that the Select Board keeps in mind that town salaries are growing at a rapid rate, that we are looking at a $7 million deficit in two years. And that one of the primary things that we should be looking for in the next town manager is his or her ability to control town expenses. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I see we have no more speakers. So let's move on to the next budget. Budget number 11, Town Clerk. And also, just in case I didn't mention this earlier, I will set a, I'll keep a timer going, which I'll reset as we start a new budget. So I'll set like a 15-minute timer. And again, it's like, it won't necessarily cut off debate at 15 minutes, but I think I'll consider that the earliest time at which, well, I don't have the right to term to cut off debate. What I mean is to ask for a straw poll to see if there's interest. So I'll have that timer running for each of these, in case we're talking about any given budget for, for longer than 15 minutes. And of course, as always, it's up to the meeting whether we're actually going to terminate debate or not. So, see, do we have any speakers for, so the, we had, Ms. Benedict had asked to hold this from the list of debate of budgets. So if Ms. Benedict wants to get on the speaker queue, I'd be happy to take her up first as a courtesy for holding it.
I pass. And if you pick one, I pass.
Okay, so let's take Ms. Atlas.
Hi, yeah, I was just looking at, sorry, Aliyah Atlas, Precinct 4. When I was looking at the budget on 11, and this might be a typo from the Select, from the Finance Committee report, but the number for total personnel services, it detailed in 11A sums to 256, 199. And what's actually listed at the top for Personnel Services is 438, 194. It looks like an 81% increase, and I do see the expenses have gone up a lot as well. So I'm just looking for some clarity if that's a typo or if there have been some changes.
So let's see, who's, Mr. Chapdalen, do you have an answer for Ms. Atlas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Chapdalen, Town Manager. So this is the first year that Section B, the elections in town meeting, have been included, and I believe that explains the jump. It's not actually an increase in expenditures. It's a difference in where it was reported. The prior three years, 2021 and 22, elections in town meeting were budgeted under the Select Board's budget. And that explains the difference that you're seeing there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so it was a reporting discontinuity across years. Thank you. Okay, seeing no more speakers for Town Clerk budget, let's move on to budget number 14, Planning and Community Development. And Mr. Oster had asked to hold that for discussion. So if Mr. Oster wants to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Oster, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I am trying to act on your invitation to preserve town meeting time by getting things in writing. And I had, I asked this question of our town manager, got a detailed response, and would like to refer people to it, but unfortunately, from some glitch, it's not up on the warrant yet. So I'd like to pass, and when it is available, make a brief announcement at the start of one of the town meeting sessions.
Okay. I support your right to do so. So we'll make sure we get that ironed out and get that posted on the annotated more. Thank you. Okay, and we have Ms. Bloom. Let's take her up next.
Nancy Bloom, Precinct 18. I have a small question on the Planning and Community Development Budget. The expenses went up by 81,000. Is that an extra person? Could someone answer that?
Is, is Ms. Ray here? Director Ray? Or Mr. Chapdalen, are you able to answer that question?
Yes, I can, Mr. Moderator. Adam Chapdalen, Town Manager. The major difference, the major addition that you're seeing in this budget is the CDBG Administrator. That's a position that has existed in town for decades, since the start of the town receiving CDBG funding from the federal government. However, we've never reported it as part of the General Fund. We've always kept it in a separate grant account. However, this year, in an attempt to increase, or really ever increase our transparency in our budgetary documents, we reported the CDBD, CDBG, excuse me, Administrator position in the General Fund budget, but we're showing an offset in, you can see, under the Offset section, a CDB Administrator Offset. So there's no new expenditure to the General Fund coming from that, but we are reporting it and thereby showing an increase in expenditures based upon that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Chapdalen.
Great, thank you. Seeing no more speakers, let's move on. But I find that Community Development Block Grant rolls off the tongue better, even though it's a lot more solvable. So let's move on to budget number 16, Zoning Board of Appeals. And Ms. Friedman asked to hold that budget for discussion. So Ms. Friedman wants to come up to speak. Name and precinct.
Bethan. Friedman, Precinct 15, pass.
Okay. Seeing no more speakers, let's move on to budget 17, Public Works. And so let's bring up Mr. Tremblay. And let's queue up Mr. Ratamarker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tremblay, Precinct 19. One of the, one of the questions I have is I was curious if the town is planning to part of me wants to say mess up more intersections in town, but I think I'll be polite and say, is the town planning to reconfigure any more intersections in town this year?
Yeah, let's go with the more polite framing. Mr. Ratamarker, do you have an answer to that? Whether there's any plans to reconfigure any intersections in town?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ratamarker, Director of Public Works. The two major intersection projects that are in planning right now are Mass Ave and Appleton and Chestnut Street and Chestnut Street, where we're looking at some improvements to Crosswalks.
Because I'm not familiar with Chestnut Street. Appleton Street, are you going to be taking down those, the the markers and putting up curbs or anything like that? Or what do we, I mean, I've seen problems with that intersection. When they, when a truck tries to deliver materials to the stores along there, the bus can't get through. That was quite amusing watching that.
Mr. Ratamarker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ratamarker, Director of Public Works. The project is in the, is in the planning and design stage, so I don't have a clear picture of what ultimate design will be.
Cool. Will there be public hearings about that?
Yeah.
All right. I guess that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. Let's take Mr. Kepline next.
Hi, Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. I had a little head-scratcher about the Mount Gilboa repaving as a private way. So the house is owned by the town, and the park that the road runs through is owned by the town. And yet this came out of a private way repaving budget. I, I'm curious how the accounting worked out, that's all.
Mr. Ratamarker, do you have the answer to where, where the funds for that project came from?
There was a private way, I'm sorry, Mike Ratamarker, Director of Public Works. There was a private way, not leading up to the road, but a private way in the area.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kepline?
I don't know. I'm a little confused what, what road was repaved. I remember from, for longstanding, that the road going to the house was in need of improvement, but I'm not sure what road, you know, just looking at the map, it looked like, you know, it's all surrounded by the Town of Butters, so they're, you know, it's the town. Whatever. Okay. Thank you.
Nothing else. We have minimal speakers for the Public Works budget. So let's move on to budget number 18, the Facilities Budget. And we had Ms. Thornton asked to hold that. So if you can bring up Ms. Thornton.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. My name is Barbara Thornton, Precinct 16. I have a question about the Facilities Department budget. The Arlington invests a lot of money in our buildings. We spent $2 million for the high school alone. But the assessed, 200 million, but the assessed value records as of a couple of years ago only showed buildings at 5% to 10% of their replacement value. For example, Robyn's Library was valued at about 3.8 million. Replacing our hard assets is expensive, and the Facilities Department is the key department charged to take care of properties and make them last. This benefits the taxpayers. Facilities Maintenance is a relatively new department, but seems to have had a lot of turnover in its leadership. Last year, the Select Board received a commitment from the Town Manager to produce a report on the department's progress on a regular basis at a minimum of once a year. Can someone speak to the status of the department, its director, and whether there is an annual report available for last fiscal year or this fiscal year? Thank you.
Mr. Chapdalen, do you have an answer for Ms. Thornton?
Yes, thank you. Adam Chapdalen, Town Manager. Ms. Thornton's absolutely correct. We have suffered from turnover in the Director's position over the course of the past several years. We are fortunate We are fortunate, however, that a new Facilities Director with a great deal of experience in managing institutional buildings like those that Arlington has operating as a town government started today. So we do have a new Facilities Director. Yeah, it's good news. It's very good news. Mr. Rob Berent will take it. Well, you know, we'll find the right opportunity to introduce him to the community in the coming weeks. Admittedly, given given the lapse in time between the last Director leaving and the hiring of a new Director, we have not put together that annual report yet. But with the experience of Jim Feeney, the Deputy Town Manager, acting as Facilities Director and now the new Director coming aboard, coming aboard, we will be able to produce something and share it publicly.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, let's take Mr. Tremblay next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and Tremblay, Precinct 19. In keeping with your your comments about reaching out to town officials, actually, Mr. Feeney reached out to me when he saw me asking about the Facilities Budget. And we had an email exchange, very good one, and and he answered all my questions. But just briefly, the report to town meetings, the the maintenance staff is very short. It's not that the town hasn't been trying to hire maintenance staff, but in this current working environment, it's been very difficult. And that was the crux of my question is is with 1.3 million square feet that the town manages, how many how many actual employees were there that actually do the work, you know, plumbers, electricians, and that and that? Sort and Jim told me that they're doing the best, the town is doing the best they can, but they're very short staffed, just like a lot of other people. And so I will encourage the town to hire. Oh, I should. This this goes back to a previous comment about the the whole step step thing we talked about a couple of a couple of sessions ago. It would be very nice to have a instead of just talking about what the step is, a sort of a description of what it is and what the pay is, so we can get a better feel. Mr. Feeney told me that using that step process, they've been trying to get get the pay rate up to something that's competitive. And I I wholeheartedly agree with that and hope the town is able to hire the the skilled people that are needed to maintain all these buildings. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblay. All right, seeing no more speakers for the Facilities Budget, let's move on now to Budget Number 19, Police Services. And Mr. Weinstein was requested that we hold that for discussion. So if we can get Mr. Weinstein.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Name and precinct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have three questions.
I'm sorry, name and precinct.
I'm sorry, Jordan, Jordan Weinstein, Precinct 21.
Weinstein, sorry.
I have three questions. Should I ask them all at once or one at a time? That's my first question.
You're I want you to do one at a time because
Okay, the first one is about social workers. I noticed that there's been a 22% drop in the salary for 2023 from 60,000 to about $47,000. And it looks to me, the way I I understand it or interpret it, is that the position has gone from a full-time position to a three quarters time position. And I'm wondering if that's the case, why that was, or just to have that explained.
Yeah, do we have Chief Flaherty here to to answer Mr. Weinstein's question?
Moderator Julie Flaherty, Chief of the Position of a Homeless Outreach Social Worker, and that's a shared position with Health and Human Services. So we did not reduce that position. It's shared between the two budgets.
Oh, I I guess just as a follow up to that. But why does the budget show a decrease from in 2022, 60,500, and then 2023, 47,000?
Chief Flaherty?
I will defer to Mr. Poole on that. I don't have the answer to that question.
All right, Deputy Town Manager, Mr. Poole, do you have an answer?
Mr. Weinstein, could you repeat, Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager? So I said, could you repeat your question as I'm looking at the budget and see which line you're looking at?
Yeah, sure. I'm on page 42. It's Police Services. Detail of Personnel Services, Social Workers, down a third from the bottom there. Do you see that?
Yes, now I see it. Thank you.
Okay, so if you follow along, 66,000, 69,000, 60,000 for 2022, and then it suddenly drops to 47,000. And that was my question. Why the drop?
I believe because of the accurate depiction, the accurate description of the split is really a 50-50 split between the Police Department and the Health and Human Services Department. And so in the previous budget, it overestimated what the amount was. And so this was just correcting that, those figures.
Okay, all right. I I was just wondering if the 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 work week of the social worker had been reduced, but obviously it happened. Um, my second question has to do with the overtime figure. We're paying, it seems like generally speaking, are approximately the same amount every year for police overtime to the tune of about $660,000. The first part of my question for that is why are we spending so much money on overtime when we could potentially roll that into? I'm assuming overtime is often paid a time and a half or double time, depending on the contract. But when we could perhaps be saving money by actually hiring another body or two? Yeah, that's my question pertaining to overtime.
Mr. Poole, and if if Mr. Poole is not able to answer, we can go to Chief Flaherty.
I would say that we the question about hiring more people versus keep versus paying more overtime is one that is always one that we try to balance. It's so it's a good question that you're asking. I think we have, in general, looked to the number of positions that the Police Department has told us we need. We sometimes have had vacancies in those positions, which meant means that we have not been able to fill them as quickly as we'd like to. And so that sometimes means that we have more overtime than I ideally would like to have. I would say in this day and age, I would just add there are challenges in hiring that have been persistent for a number of reasons. I won't go into all of them tonight. It's a long discussion. But I think overall, we do try to hire with the right number of people. And we do look at that on an ongoing basis to make sure that you know, we are properly staffing the department.
Okay, my son, did you have a third question?
Well, I have one other follow up on that. I I guess my concern is that I could understand if overtime spiked because of a shortage in personnel. But it seems very consistent going in 2020, around 630,000, the same amount, 2021, 2022. It goes up a little bit to 660,000. So I I'm just asking if if perhaps the town management could look into that and and maybe see if we're spending more than we need to on overtime and could save money by actually hiring someone. My third question, I I don't see it as a line item, but I'm wondering. I I know that there's been coverage about the use of body cameras that is going to be are going to be deployed in Arlington. I don't know to what extent or where that is, where that sits at this moment. But I was wondering where where that is seen in the budget and if it could be explained about how much that's going to cost the town, if anything.
Sure, Chief Flaherty, does that appear in the the budget that we're looking at this year?
No, it doesn't. Thank you, Mr. Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. It doesn't appear in the budget right now. The town currently in negotiations with both police unions. We did apply for and receive grant funds from the state for body one cameras. And we also have asset forfeiture funds that we would be purchasing them with.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. Let's see, next we have Ms. Garber.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Name and precinct, please.
Judith Garber, Precinct 4. I actually did see something in the budget about the body cameras under the double star and expenses. Looks like there was 40,000 spent in fiscal year 2022 for body cameras. I remember this coming up at town meeting last year. And my question is, do we have any policies in place yet for these body cameras around recording or storage of footage, given that we're spending money on it?
Chief Flaherty, can you answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. We haven't spent any money on body cameras because we have not purchased them yet. We do have draft policies in place. And again, the town is currently in negotiations with police unions to move forward with with body cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize if I misread that budget. And then the line item for stipends of about $23,000. What is what are those stipends for?
Chief Flaherty, the stipends, can can you answer what those are in reference to?
Do you be more clear which which stipend?
It just says stipends.
This is the I believe it's the second to last row before the last like total line. Hold down a little bit.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager, that is a stipend for clothing.
Okay, can we scroll the display down just a little bit to see the bottom of this budget section? Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all.
All right, thank you. Okay, so let's take Mr. Jamison next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Jamison, if you Mr. Jamison, if you can hear me, your audio is coming in very garbled. So perhaps yeah. Let's see, can someone from the panel perhaps contact his question over Q and A and try to get that addressed while we're on the police budget? Because I don't think we're going to be able to have a a real time conversation over audio.
Yes.
So so
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, I keep getting, hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. It seems clearer now.
Mr. Moderator, the problem is I keep getting muted by the host numerous times.
Oh.
Which is quite novel. It happened last week, too. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I you I I hope to inquire about least details from the chief. These these form an important function to make sure that work in town by contractors and etcetera can get done. Otherwise, projects are delayed, and that's bad for development. Now, last year or the year before, we enlarged the scope of who can fill the details. My question through to the chief is, did that fix the problem? Where we didn't have enough people to staff the details?
Chief Flaherty, did did that address the issue with having enough folks for details?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. It did for the most part. For any given day, we have from 3 to 30 traffic details, depending on several factors, including weather, the time of the year, and the projects that are to be completed. We use Arlington Police Officers, we use neighboring town police officers, and we now have four special police officers who have been assisting with traffic details. It's really difficult to see how many details go unfilled, but the number is relatively low. So for the most part, yes, I think that 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 has definitely worked towards filling the details that were going unfilled previously.
Thank you, Chief Flaherty. Now, I hope that you you and the Town Manager's Office will continue to monitor this. And if there's still a even a small amount of unscribed next fall that you consider bringing forward to us a to town meeting, a citizens' traffic solution. Alas, you have a question, perhaps Mr. Poole or might be asked of this. The fees that that the police get for scheduling, the surcharge on that, where do those funds go? And has the manager's office considered using an offset?
Mr. Chapdeline, do you have an answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I believe we budget those as in a small revenue account. But I have to be honest, I would have to look into that and determine whether or not legally we could utilize that as an offset.
Thank you very much. And Adam, congratulations on your quote unquote retirement. We will miss you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you. And I'm hearing from technical folks on the panel that there might be issues where if someone has a a poor connection, internet connection to the Zoom call, the Zoom might be the permission to talk might be cycling as the connection kind of comes and goes. So apologies if that if that's the case, we're not really sure why that that was cutting out. Let's take let's see. Mr. Fisher next, or take someone out of order that we haven't heard quite as much from.
Hello, Ezra Fisher, Precinct 4. I share my colleague's concern about the overtime line, the consistency of it and the size. And I was just wondering, what duties are most common when paying out overtime? Who approves the request for overtime and what are the criteria?
Sure, so Chief Flaherty, can you answer Mr. Fisher's questions about overtime? How it's decided to like what details tend to get it and so on?
Yes, our Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police, we have a minimum amount of staffing that's in patrol for any given shift. And when that falls below the staffing level, then we would hire overtime, and that would be in the Patrol Division.
Anything else, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you.
I see Mr. Foscat has his hand raised. Is that just a leftover hand or?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Charles Foscat, Precinct 10. I just wanted to address Mr. Weinstein's overtime question. The the numbers in the Finance Committee report are the buttons for overtime. That's why they're all they're very simpler. And overtime is sometimes used when there's a surprise when officers retire, for example, and you have to make up for the for the lack of personnel to fill certain certain duties and or or when people are out sick or whatever. So it's it's a budgeted number. The the next year's budget is based on what the actuals, how close the actuals were the prior year.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. Sorry, I didn't catch your 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 hand earlier.
No problem.
Yep. Okay, so let's take Ms. Hyam next.
Lea Bahayam, Precinct 15. I move to terminate debate on the police budget.
Okay, so we have motion by Ms. Hyam to terminate debate on the police budget. Do we have any seconds? And we have a second from Mr. McCabe. So let's bring up a let's open voting on terminating debate on the Police Services Budget within Article 50. Okay, so we're voting on whether to terminate debate on the police budget within Article fifty. So if you want to stop debating the police budget, then you'll vote yes. If you want to continue debating or discussing the police budget, you vote no. And as always, termination of debate is a two-thirds vote. And if you're having if you're having trouble voting in the portal, you can always vote through the Q and A. One hundred ninety-five votes in. Just wait a little bit longer. Try to get your votes in as quickly as you can as soon as your wave of precincts opens up for voting. And then, as I mentioned earlier tonight, we will not be cycling through the voting screens on votes to terminate debate. But we will on main motions and motions to amend and substitute motions. Most votes are in at this point, like the vast majority. So let's just wait another another fifteen seconds before we close voting on terminating debate on the police budget within Article fifty, ten seconds. Five seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And we have hundred seventy votes in the affirmative, fifty-three negative seventy-six percent. And it meets the two-thirds threshold. So debate is terminated on the police budget. And we're not going to wait for the screens this time. Let's move on to you could always find these votes in the portal under the view votes button on the left-hand side if you're interested who voted to terminate debate or not. So let's move on to Budget Number Twenty-One, Inspections. Inspections Budget and Mr. Jamison asked to hold that. So let's bring up Mr. Jamison to speak on this. Let's clear the speaking queue if you haven't done that already.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Jamison. Go ahead. Name and precinct.
Gordon Jameson, Precinct Twelve. Wish to welcome the new Director of Inspection Services to the town or to the position of Director. Perhaps the Director through you could summarize in a sentence or two the important functions of his department.
Can we bring up the new director to describe his department? And also, can we clear the speaking? Because we still have, I believe, speakers from last budget, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Champ, Director of Inspection Services. Yes, of course. So obviously, our main function is the review and issuing of building permits for the projects in town, but also the enforcement of the zoning in-town bylaws. I mean, that, you know, those three items make up our main functions.
Thank you. And in our just on our email discussions, you mentioned that you have some new hires and some objectives for them. Could you briefly tell the meeting about that?
We do. That is correct. Yes, we were short-staffed on the particularly on the building end. And we've recently we recently filled a building inspector position and an administrative position that will both help help us catch up with our backlog of enforcement and and the paperwork that goes along with it. So we've already began some outreach with with local businesses on on violations such as signs. And so we're hoping to catch up soon.
Excellent. And you also, I believe, have some new processes, including affidavits regarding the building permit. Could you detail that very quickly? And are there some initial positive results you can share?
Yes, of course. So yes, we've added a final cost affidavit to the building permit applications. Although not not fully in effect because of our staff shortages, we've still seen a positive result. Even just the initial submittal of the applications, prices are coming in more realistic and our revenues are up because of that.
Excellent. And could you briefly remind citizens who might be listening in home as well as the body the benefits of using the Building, the Inspection Services Department, access to expertise, execs to your expertise, as well as the risks of not using them in safety and potential financial penalties for not pulling permits?
Right. And I'll also just interject just that all residents at home, because this is not limited just to citizens, but yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course. Just trying to use some more inclusive language. Mr. Champ?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question?
I just I just thought you could extol briefly on the benefits of using your department's expertise and the risks, both at the safety and penalty level, for not.
Yes, of course. So particularly at a time like now where the, you know, construction is at the highest that we've ever seen it. There's a, you know, there's a lot of a lot of building that that, you know, a lot of building going on that we're catching that's not up to code. There's a lot of unlicensed building going on. There's there's a there's homeowners being defrauded. There's a there's a lot that's going on and, I mean, you know, we're definitely making a difference right now.
Yep, you got your hands full. And and there's penalties if you don't pull permits, right?
Yes, of course. If you're a licensed builder, you would pay triple fee on the on the permit that that you would have to get. And obviously, if you're unlicensed, you know, you're not allowed to to be working there.
And and does the affidavit process provide a wrap a wraparound so that if more work is done than planned that they also that also gets captured?
Yeah, that's correct. That's why it's only a final affidavit that that's required. The initial cost is put on the permit application and the final affidavit isn't submitted until the project is complete.
Thank you very much, sir. That's a great update on the process there. Great progress. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison, and thank you, Mr. Champ. Let's see, we have Mr. Kepline. Let's take him next.
Thank you, Mark Kepline, Precinct Nine. Thank you, Mr. Champ. I I look forward to a new level of integrity going forward. There's been a lot of problematic things in the past.
Let's, Mr. Kep, let's not cast dispersions about, I don't know if that was directed at the previous director or if there's an, let's try to keep it.
No, can you? And there's also an article, somebody wants to hire an enforcement officer. Do you think that's necessary? I mean, I've seen, again, there's a church with six signs and under the zoning bylaw, they're allowed two. And this has gone on for, I don't know, years or decades with no enforcement. And I've actually filed a complaint and the previous director refused to enforce the zoning bylaw. So is that going to change going forward? Thank you.
Yeah. And just to be clear, I mean, there's difference between integrity and which is about honesty versus strictness of enforcement of rules. And so let's just try to keep that clear. So, Mr. Champ, can you answer Mr. Kepline's question? Will there be stricter enforcement than there has been in the recent past?
Yeah, Mike Champ, Director of Inspection Services. Yes, of course. We've, again, like I said, we, you know, we struggled with the with staff shortages, but you know, and we've done the best we can, but we're, you know, we're we filled it, we filled the vacancies and and moving forward, we'll be addressing even the the issues in the past that we were unable to because of those staff shortages.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and appears we have no more speakers in the speaking queue for in inspections budget. So let's now move on to the final item that was held, which is it's not a budget per se, but the enterprise fund for Arlington. This is a letter E. So it's it's after all the numbered budgets. After twenty-seven, it'll go A through E or F, I believe. And then the Arlington Young Arlington Youth Counseling Center Enterprise Fund, letter E. And Ms. Benedict was interested in holding that. So let's bring up Ms. Benedict.
Hi, Beth Benedict, Precinct Twenty-One. I'm interested. I have a question about the this psychiatric nurse that has been hired, which I'm happy to see. But there is an increase from forty-five thousand to ninety-nine thousand from the year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And then that goes up to one hundred twenty-three thousand in twenty twenty-three. And I'm just, but a lot above it is a psychiatrist that goes down to zero. So I'm just kind of wondering more, I'd like more information about that. Is there anyone that can answer that question for me?
Yeah, so let's see. Let's see, is anyone on the panel? Let's take Mr. Chaplin. Do you have an answer for that?
Hey, Mr. Moderator. Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. I see Ms. Bonjorno, I would actually defer to her if the moderator is okay with that.
Absolutely. Director Bonjorno?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Adam. This is Christine Bonjorno, Health and Human Services Director. So there seems to be an error in the FinCom report, and I apologize for that. So the psychiatric nurse was a position that we had a few, a number of years ago, we had a psychiatrist who consulted and a psych nurse who provided direct treatment. That nurse and that psychiatrist combo retired and we switched over to a psychiatrist. So the 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 line, the amount is correct, but it actually should be up on the line above that. So it should be, it should read psychiatrist at one twenty-three. We increased the number of hours that that psychiatrist was working from the ninety-nine to the one twenty-three, utilizing some extra resources that we were able to access for this upcoming year due to the increase in need. We're seeing a significant increase in mental health needs among our youth population. So we were able to, because this is an enterprise fund, which is run like a business, we were able to increase the services we offer and and increase the revenue that comes in for to to address that.
Okay, so Ms. Brazil, were you able to catch that change? I didn't entirely follow what Ms. Bonjorno was suggesting about changing in this enterprise fund. Ms. Brazil, did you take note of that?
I have a note and I believe I understood it and I can certainly get that clarified to make an administrative correction.
Okay, and yeah, I I I support that administrative change. Okay, let's see. And Ms. Benedict, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about this. Make sure I'm clear. So the psychiatric nurse, there will not be hired, you will not be hiring another one. You'll just, there'll just be one psychiatrist. Are there any plans to hire more psychiatry nurses or psychologists?
Ms. Bonjorno?
Thank you, Christine Bonjorno, Health and Human Services Director. At the at the moment, we are sticking with just the psychiatrist. In order to have a psych nurse, we actually have to have a psychiatrist for our license from the state. So either way, we have to have the psych psychiatrist. If we were able to secure a psych nurse, if we were able to find one. Again, this is a field that's very difficult to find individuals that are available. I mean, this is a very, this is a very sought-after position. And so it's hard to find people to fill these positions, particularly in in centers like this. So we're very fortunate to have a psychiatrist. At this moment, the the psych nurse position is not filled. We are we are only serving with the psychiatrist. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Benedict and Ms. Bonjorno. They're kind of seeing no other speakers in the queue for the Arlington Youth Counseling Center Enterprise Fund. That is the last held budget or fund. There was a question I saw briefly go by in the Q and A about, did we hold Budget Number Twenty-four, Health and Human Services? No, we did not. That was not held. There was a question, there was a notice of read consideration given at the end of last Wednesday's meeting. But that doesn't really apply here. So we have now concluded the debates on the budgets. It's nine twenty-nine, but let's go ahead now with a vote on, let's open voting on Article fifty. This will just take a few minutes and then we'll take a break immediately after that, just so we can get this all wrapped up without having to interrupt our handling of Article fifty. So okay, so if you see, so voting is now open. If you see a message in your voting window saying that you are in wave three or in the next wave, just sit tight and your wave will open up. And we're already, we're we're voting on Article fifty appropriation of the town budgets. So this is the entirety of all the budgets that we just discussed, plus the ones that we did not discuss that are in Appendix B of the Finance Committee's report to town meeting. And so you vote yes if you approve of these budgets. Vote no if you do not approve of these budgets. If the budgets fail, it means we essentially are unable to appropriate money for these budgets for the next fiscal year. Vote yes if you do wish to appropriate money for the budgets and the enterprise funds for the next fiscal year. Over two hundred votes in. It's going pretty quickly this time. So please vote as quickly as you can. Once voting opens up for you, which should be now, it should be open for everybody now, all three waves of precincts should now be open for voting. And this is a majority vote. Given the amount of money involved, I think it's okay if we spend a little bit more time voting, make sure we get more votes in because there's a lot of money at stake here. Okay, we just have a handful of folks left who've been recently active in the portal. So let's just give another thirty seconds and then we'll wrap up voting. And if you can't get your vote through in the portal, you could always use the Q and A or you can text or call Ms. Brazil. Fifteen seconds until we close voting on Article fifty, all the appropriation of town budgets. Ten seconds. Five seconds. And let's close voting now on Article fifty. Okay, and it passes two hundred and twenty-four in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and three abstentions, ninety-seven percent. So Article fifty passes. So the appropriations for the town budgets. So we will cycle through all these screens because this is the main motion. We'll only skip these screens for votes on terminating debate. And once we've cycled through these screens, we will then take a ten-minute break. And when we come back, we will be looking at Article fifty-one, which is the capital budget. Which is separate from all these other budgets. Okay, so that's all the precincts with the voting displayed in all those precincts. So let's go ahead and take a break now for ten minutes. We'll come back at nine forty-four. At which point we will take up the capital budget in Article fifty-one. Thank you. Okay, so let's now bring up Article fifty-one, capital budget. And to introduce this will be our Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, Dr. Yontar. So let's bring up Dr. Yontar to speak on the capital budget. And I believe he has slides too. Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everyone. I hope you and yours are all well.
Introduce yourself for everyone.
Yes, I'm Timor Kadi Yontar, Capital Planning Committee Chair, speaking on Article 51, the capital budget. Next slide, please. This evening, I'm going to cover the five points that are shown here. Next slide, please. First, thank you. The capital plan is a group effort. Many thanks to our partners throughout the town. But mostly, this was months of hard work by the Capital Planning Committee. I've listed our members for you here. You're a combination of citizen appointees and school and town officials. If you're interested in our work, we invite you to attend our meetings, which are public. We also post notices from time to time, asking for applicants when there are vacancies. And I especially want to call out the work of four members. Much gratitude to Kate Leary, Christopher Moore, Sandy Poehler, and Julie Wayman for their invaluable contributions of data organization, writing, editing, and production of the Report to Town Meeting. I couldn't have done it without you. And a dedication to our former Vice Chair, Ryan Raring, who sadly passed away over the winter. He taught us all so much about public service. This capital plan and report are for him. Next slide, please. Okay, second, the content of the report. It has a purple cover, much like the slide header, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. We lead off with an explanation of what you're voting on, and that vote itself. This is on pages 1 through 5. It's the capital budget for fiscal year 2023, starts on July 1st and runs through June 30th, 2023. It lists what capital items will buy in that year and what will pay in debt service. More detail on those in a minute. The report also talks about the full five-year plan with detail by department. It covers both fiscal '23, which is the only part you're voting on, and projections for the out years. And in the appendix, we have several tables covering all the capital plan items. Next slide, please. Okay, third, our fiscal '23 acquisitions, which totaled $9.5 million. They're paid for with the combination of cash from general tax, other funds, and bonds. And they're listed in Sections 2, 4, and 5 of Article 51. We discussed it in the report. Here are the highlights. 62% of the capital budget is going to, is going to public works, mainly water and sewer maintenance rehabilitation, also roadway and sidewalk repairs and improvements, as well as vehicle replacements. Another 16% goes to schools, including information technology for education. That sum covers facility repairs, academic IT, and vehicle replacements. Yet another 14% goes to community safety, fire, and police. That sum is mostly vehicles. In fact, about half of the total is paying for a replacement fire engine for one that is currently 20 years old. The remainder of the budget, about 3/4 of the million dollars, goes to capital needs for town buildings, recreation, IT, libraries, and all the other departments. The portion that we financed through bonds in Section 5 comes to $2.25 million in total. I highlight these because they obligate future town meetings to pay their debt service. So they specifically require a 2/3 vote by this town meeting. Next slide, please. And that's a good segue to Item 4, debt service. For fiscal '23, it's $19.1 million. This is an Article 51, Section 3, and is mostly paid by cash from general tax. It covers principal and interest on all of the bonds that the town has issued in the past. With a few exceptions, our debt is non-exempt. It fits in the capital plan approved by town meeting. Exempt debt is outside the capital plan. It's authorized by townwide debt exclusion referenda. These are big-ticket items. Clearest example is Arlington High School. We have to pay interest on both non-exempt and exempt debt, and here's where we pay it. Next slide, please. Apart from debt exclusions, though, the town keeps within the capital plan. And that's my fifth point. Its size in fiscal '23 is $9.1 million. You see it in this table shown here, which is also in your reports. The 5% rule limits the capital budget to, you guessed it, 5% of the town budget. We target that level in both fiscal '23 and in the out years. And we've achieved it in all years of this plan. This rule constrains the town to live within its means, and thus to make room for some new high priority item, something else has to give. Next slide, please. And so in conclusion, I hope you've had the chance to read the full report. The committee and I are available to take your questions. Please vote yes on 51. And please stay safe. Thank you all very much for your time and attention. That concludes the Capital Planning Committee's presentation to town meeting.
Great, thank you, Dr. Yontar. So let's take Mr. Leone now from the speaking queue. Name and place, please.
John Leone, Precinct 8. I have two questions concerning five, number nine, additional classrooms for the peer school. Are we building additional classrooms on this peer school, or what do we do with our $100,000?
Yeah, so Dr. Yontar, do you have an answer for where the $100,000 is going for the additional classrooms in the peer school?
Is Mr. Mason available from the school department?
I don't believe we asked Mr. Mason here for that. Is there someone else who might know the answer to that?
All right, well, I'll try to cover it in his absence. So there is the need to do a bit of reconfiguring of peers in order to make room for additional students. And so this is a small payment for that reconfiguration.
Oh, we
We're not building, we're not building additional, you know, we're not building addition on, onto peers, onto peer school. We're doing some reconfiguration within the building.
Within the current building envelope.
Correct.
Okay. What rooms would we be losing? Or making the other room smaller?
I'm afraid I don't have the answer to that one.
Okay, thank you. How about number five, number 11, Hardy School roof replacement? Is the roof defective? And is there anything, we haven't had the Hardy School online for too many years, as I remember. Since it's, since it was rebuilt, how? What's going on with that?
Hardy School is actually, yeah, the Hardy School is actually one of our older rebuilt schools. It's the second oldest after Brackett. It was renovated in 2001. And this is actually an issue that we are now experiencing, which is that after the successful rebuild of all of our elementary schools, the ones that were done first are getting, you know, out of their teenage years, and they're starting to need some further work. And that's so that's one of the things that we're facing right now, both in terms of envelope, so roofs, also things like HVAC. We were fortunate to have HVAC money in the form of some of the federal ARPA aid to address that need. But yeah, the roofs, and it's not the only, not only at Hardy, but it's happening in a few of the buildings that we are looking at doing roofwork to prevent further infiltration.
So it's a common maintenance, normal common maintenance. I'm glad to see there's a plan to maintain the buildings after we spent a bunch of money building them. Thank you, Mr. Yontar.
Thank you, Mr. Leone. And thank you.
This moderator.
Thank you. Okay, let's take Mr. Harrelson next. Is Mr. Harrelson able to speak? Let's see. Name and precinct, please. See, Mr. Harrelson, it appears that you're allowed to speak at this point. Is it possible you're muted from your end?
Let me try a different microphone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, I can. Go ahead. Name and precinct.
Yes, Brooks Harrelson, Precinct 16. Thank you. This is a minor curiosity only. Section 2, Item 11, Town Micro Computer Program. Could I find some explanation of what that is?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'd be happy. For the moderator, I'd like to ask our town CIO, Ms. Shepherd, to address that.
Yeah, Ms. Shepherd, can you answer Mr. Harrelson's question?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. So for the Town Micro Computer Program, it actually covers quite a few things. It's to refresh first and foremost.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, name and title, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Patricia Shepherd, Chief Information Officer. So for the Town Micro Computer Program, we cover first and foremost all of the administrative laptops and desktops for the staff. But also, it also will include any switches that might be end of life, servers that we might need to get, and then obviously printers for the staff as well.
Well, thank you. I wouldn't have called all of the microcomputers, I think, of things like Arduinos, etc. So, but thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's, let's take Mr. Benson next. I don't think we've heard from him before.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Eugene Benson, Precinct 10. And I have a question about item paragraph 5, Item 3, the engine pumper to replace number 1025. And my question is whether the fire department looked to purchase an all-electric pumper. The Los Angeles Fire Department recently brought on its first all-electric pumper, and with our town aiming toward zero net emissions, and our town bylaw, separate bylaw, requiring us to purchase the most fuel-efficient vehicle when appropriate. I wonder if the fire department could comment on whether it had looked or will look at purchasing an electric pumper. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone from the fire department who can answer that question, please?
Or, Moderator, since I don't see Chief Kelly, let me take a shot at this, and then we'll see where we get from there. So
Sure. Mr. Chapline is also offered to answer, but Dr. Yontar, you can go ahead if you want.
I'll just start by saying that I was part of the subcommittee that reviewed the fire department's requests. We did not discuss an all-electric engine. I am pleased to hear that they are becoming available. I didn't know that they were available, that they were being used in large cities such as Los Angeles. That's great news. The issue with large, heavy-duty vehicles like engines, like public works equipment and so forth, is that they do require a lot of more engine power. And so they're a little bit further back on the on the adoption frontier of electric vehicles. But so we, I know that we didn't discuss that. I don't know if there's a issue in terms of availability or price point. Certainly, there is the need to replace this pumper. It's been, it's been in service for 20 years, and that's the life cycle for these vehicles. And it's been in the planning process to purchase this on this timeframe for the last few years. I would be happy to defer also to the town manager if he has to add.
Sure. Mr. Chapline, anything to add to that?
I thank Mr. Moderator, Adam Chapline, Town Manager. I would only add, I just quickly looked it up after Mr. Benson raised it. I think that news literally broke in Los Angeles today of that pumper being purchased. I think we'll have to research that technology more deeply. I did quickly see that the price tag for that particular unit was nearly 50% more than what's budgeted for for this pumper. And I think we'd have to get, understand the range and the impact of winter temperatures on that range. Any of us who drive EVs, I think we know the range goes down by about 50% in a winter climate. So I think we have to, you know, kick the proverbial tires before we would be able to determine if that technology was feasible here in its current state, but it's certainly something we want to look at as time goes forward.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think what I read about the pumper that Los Angeles Fire Department brought on is that it's the first electric one in the United States. So it is the leading edge of the technology. But I just hope that when the next pumper needs to be replaced, that there'll be a serious look at moving toward electric vehicles. From what I've read about the LAPD one, it seems like it would be a good choice, although, as you know, it is more expensive, but over the life cycle, it might not be. That said, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Let's take Mr. Jameson next. Name and precinct, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. During, I noted earlier in the meeting that some concerns were raised by a Bracket parent during our precinct meetings earlier this spring. And the second one was about the Black Bracket School playgrounds, which are now closed and either fenced in or tied off with the danger tape. As I understand it, and Mr. Moore kindly reached out after I asked the first question, there's some information that the $80,000 budgeted will provide for a short-term fix. I want to, I want to have, I would like to get confirmation of that, and that's especially important because I'm very pleased to see, but simultaneous to this issue at the school, Robbins Farm Playground has a rebuilt structure through the Community Preservation Act. So obviously, the Bracket playgrounds are going to get a higher use level while the Robbins Farm Playground is obviously out of school hours, but while the, while the Robbins Farm is under construction. So can we get some surety that the Bracket School playgrounds will be operable next fall?
Sure. Dr. Yontar, yeah. Yeah, so yes. There are funds that the, our input schools are tapping to make immediate fixes to the Bracket Playground. And it will take place over this summer, 2022, to be ready for fall, 2022. And as you noted, Mr. Jameson, those are intended to be short-term fixes, last a few years. And that should at least relieve the being roped off as they are currently and being able to be used. At the same time, as you also noted, if the Community Preservation Act funds are approved, then that has budget for the Robbins Farm Park Playground across the street from the Bracket Playground. So that would be also a benefit to the students at Bracket. Now, longer term, our fiscal '23 capital budget includes $80,000 for the study of the Bracket Playground. It will take place over the fiscal year, that is to say, the same as the school year, 2022 through 2023. That would then figure out the long-term fix. We will see what the study tells us, get a better cost estimate, et cetera. That would then figure out the long-term fix. We will see what the study tells us, get a better cost estimate, et cetera. And then we will reexamine that in the next capital plan. We currently have a hold of $800,000 of capacity for fiscal '25. But we also reexamine the capital plan every year because things do change. And if there is room, and if the result of the study tells us that, you know, what can be done and what it will cost, we would certainly be able to consider putting that in in fiscal '24. In the meantime, the short-term fixes should be lasting for a few years and taking care of that.
One quick clarification, if I may. Who's funding the short-term fixes?
The, that's the Arlington Public Schools. I would refer to their representatives, but I don't think they're here tonight.
I, I just, that's, I'm fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Just want to know who's doing it. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have, there was a request for Dr. Holman to connect. We'll see if we can actually get her on to potentially answer that question. Dr. Holman being the superintendent of schools. So maybe we'll circle back to that if we're able to get Dr. Holman to connect to the meeting. In the meantime, is there anything else, Mr. Jameson? Okay, so let's move on to Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, at Tremblay Precinct 19. Under section two, well, sorry about items six. I was just curious how much we wound up spending on the steps and patio, the heated steps and patio in front of Town Hall.
Dr. Yontar, do you have an answer still?
How much have we spent on the heated steps and patio in front of Town Hall?
I mean, it looks beautiful. How much did we spend for that? I'm just curious.
Is that within this budget or was that?
Prior budget. I have to look it up. I don't have it at my fingertips.
Okay.
If it's not in this budget, I'm going to call that out of scope.
Never mind. Item 14, bike rack installation. What, what, what are we, where are these bike racks? One rack? Multiple racks? What's that about?
Yeah, Dr. Yontar?
It's multiple racks. Is Director Wright available?
I don't believe we have.
I am there.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Wright, go ahead, please.
Jennifer Wright, Director of Planning and Community Development. Yes, there are many racks, and they are being installed in consultation with the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks Department at various places across town, at playgrounds. And we've been able to purchase a number of racks and are planning to get them installed this spring. Thank you.
So this has nothing to do with bluebirds?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. How about 16 and 17? What are we getting for our engineering consulting services?
Dr. Yontar, can you answer that?
This is also under planning, the design and engineering consultants?
Ms. Wright?
It's still under the section two. Line 16 and 17.
Jennifer Wright, Director of Planning and Community Development. Yes, we are planning on using those funds in order to hire consultants when we need them for assistance with engineering or consulting to help us to start new projects. We often have different requests that come into our department to research things that are well beyond the skill set of the individuals who are staffed in the department and also beyond the capacity of our engineering department. So we've requested these funds in order to be able to hire people on occasion if we need that additional assistance. Thank you.
Will this be MAPC, will it be Ironing MAPC for any of these?
What is that? I'm not sure what you're referring to. Dr. Yontar?
I'm not sure he's referring to either.
Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
We would be issuing a request for proposals from consultants, not specifically Metropolitan Area Planning Council. They may apply, but it would be open to any consultant to apply for these services. Thank you.
Okay. And line 17, roadway consulting services. We, we do have a town engineer. Is, is he able to do any of this design work?
Dr. Yontar?
That's, that's there directed to Mr. Rodamacher, if he's available.
Mr. Rodamacher, can you answer that? Like, if our staffed engineer could, could handle that?
Michael Rodamacher, Director of Public Works. Similar to planning department, there are times when work, work we need is beyond our ability to say, for example, maybe a detailed survey or other engineering work that we don't have the capacity in-house. We use this to supplement.
Okay, and how about line 20, traffic signal upgrades?
Mr. Rodamacher?
Mike Rodamacher, Director of Public Works. I'm not sure I understand if there's a question there.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Tremblay.
We're going to spend $60,000 on traffic signal upgrades. What are we upgrading?
We have a fairly aged traffic signal system, and it's used to upgrade signal boxes or, or pedestrian push-button actuators or the lights themselves.
Can we, can we do something about the light timing and some of the intersections in town or, or areas in town that are problematic? Like in front of the Stop and Shop or in Arlington Center with, with Swan Place? Or maybe down by Bates Road in Linwood where the traffic signals seem to have nothing to do with each other, except that they're frequently red?
That would probably be more of a, an engineering study to look at the timing and not a, a capital issue.
Okay, so there's no way for that. Big Belly Solar Power Trash Compactor is line 34. I'm just curious how much, if we save enough in, in collection fees, you know, or collection expenses to justify $75,000 for a trash can?
Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Adam Chaplin, Town Manager. First off, it's not, it's not one trash can for $75,000. They're about $5,000 each. Really, the, the main priority or the main impetus for pursuing this is with outdoor dining, there was a major change in workflow that occurred over the course of the pandemic, which we expect to continue going forward with many restaurants and many residents really liking outdoor dining. And that workflow is items that used to be thrown out in a restaurant in a private dumpster picked up by a private hauler were now being thrown in waste receptacles along, along Mass Ave and in some cases on Broadway. And our staffing isn't enough to keep up with that pretty significantly increased trash load. By installing these Big Belly Trash Compactors in those high-traffic areas where there is outdoor dining, not only will we be able to better address that workload issue because these containers can keep much more trash through the compaction, but will also help keep the neighborhoods and the business districts cleaner, not having overflowing trash cans, rather having it all contained within these devices.
Well, and, and that's, that's good. Does this include maintenance expenses? I have seen those things break.
We are, we are coming up just on the, the seven-minute mark here.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager, I'll quickly say my understanding is the price we would pay would include a somewhat long-term warranty that would cover maintenance for some period of time.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We do have Dr. Holman on the panel now. So let's bring her, I know she was trying to connect earlier. Was there a question previously that, that Dr. Yontar, that?
I believe the question was from Mr. Jameson. It was the question around the source of the $80,000 that would be used to perform short-term repairs on the bracket playground over this summer.
Okay. Dr. Holman, do you have an answer to, to that question?
Sure. I believe that the intention was to use some of the revolving funds that we receive from building rentals to perform some of the short-term adjustments to the playground while we await those funds to be available via capital planning in future years as planned previously.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us to answer that question. Appreciate it. Let's see. Was there a question also about the, the Pierce School or did we cover that? Dr. Yontar?
Perhaps if you're, if you be able to, Dr. Holman, the question was regarding the Pierce School additional classrooms. My understanding is that, that's not, you know, it's certainly not an addition. That would be far more money than $100,000. But it is a reconfiguration of classrooms in order to, in order to accommodate the needs in the school. Do you have any more information about that?
Certainly. Also, good evening, town meeting members. It's no problem jumping on to answer a few questions. The Pierce School is in a situation where they have a little bit of a turnover of space. So they are going, they have part of our daycare, which is available for staff members, children to attend. And that space is used very differently from what it will be used for next year, which will be one of our regular classrooms because they're expanding to have a fifth-grade classroom. And so we outfitting that space so that it is accommodating of instruct, for instructional purposes is what is necessary. So it's not a rebuild or an addition or anything. It's just reoutfitting a space so that it's appropriate for the use that it will be put to.
Great. Thank you again, Dr. Holman. Okay, so let's take Mr. McCabe next. You are at the, we're at the half an hour mark into this article. So let's bring up Mr. McCabe. Name and precinct, please?
Debate on Article 51, all matters before.
All right, so Mr. McCabe is moving to terminate debate on Article 51. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mr. Siano. So let's bring up a vote on terminating debate on Article 51, the capital budget. Okay, so if you're in favor of terminating debate on Article 51, the capital budget, vote yes. If you want to continue debate on the capital budget, press vote no. Okay, the waves of voting are still, are still opening up, so they should be, I believe they should all be opened now, so please get your votes in. And this is a two-thirds vote to terminate debate on Article 51. Okay, so among recently active town meeting members in the portal, there's only a handful that have not voted yet. Let's give another 15 seconds before we close voting on terminating debate. 10 seconds. Five seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And debate is terminated with 189 votes, the affirmative, 31 negative, and three abstentions. So we're not going to cycle through the screens. We're going to go, we're going to proceed directly to voting on the main motion, which is the capital budget. And Dr. Yontar, do you have the, is there a single figure that we could cite for the entirety of the capital budget? If not, folks can just look through the Capital Planning Committee report.
Sorry, the, the size of the capital budget for acquisition expense, this is what the total cost of what the town is buying in the coming fiscal year is $9,484,877.
Okay, so I think it's fair to say that this is for appropriating roughly nine and a half million dollars for the capital budget. So if you're in favor of that appropriation, you would vote yes. If you are against that appropriation, then you would vote no. And this is a two-thirds vote. And plus the debt service. Thank you, Mr. Jameson. So if you're in favor of the, the capital budget that's been presented here and then the Capital Planning Committee's report to town meeting, then you'll vote yes. If you are against that budget and you don't want to appropriate that money, then vote no. This is a two-thirds vote. Most folks have voted. Still waiting for several more folks. So all the waves of voting should be open by now, so please get your votes in for Article 51, the capital budget. If you're having trouble voting in the portal, you can, you can send your vote in through the Q and A and Zoom. It's just a handful of recently active members who have not voted yet, so let's, let's give another 30 seconds. Okay, 20 seconds until we close voting on Article 51, capital budget. 15 seconds. 10 seconds. 5 seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And capital budget passes. Article 51 passes 222 votes and the affirmative, three and the negative, two abstentions, and we will wait to cycle through the screens. Once we've seen votes for all precincts, we will proceed to Article 53. Because Article 52 was already covered in the consent agenda. Just a couple more screens. Okay, so let's now proceed to Article 53.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
What's that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Yontar. So Article 53 appropriation related to financing of construction or of sewers and sewerage facilities. Let's see. So this was in the Finance Committee report. We're continuing with the, the financial articles. Mr. Foskett, did you want to speak to the Finance Committee report on this?
Charles, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Charles Foskett, Precinct 10 and Chair of the Finance Committee. These are articles, this and the next article are similar articles that we vote every, every town meeting. It is to enable a town to borrow interest-free money from the MWRA to improve the cat infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure. And the, the loans get repaid via the user fees in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So if we have a couple speakers, let's take Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kristen Anderson, Precinct 11. I pulled Article 53, appropriation financing of construction or of sewer. or of sewers and sewerage facilities from the consent agenda in order to raise awareness about the reconstruction of our sanitary sewer lines. Like all area municipalities, Arlington has aging sewer infrastructure. Arlington has sanitary sewer pipes where groundwater and stormwater enter our sanitary sewer lines through what is called INI or infiltration and inflow. Infiltration means there are cracks in the sanitary sewer pipes that allow groundwater into the sanitary sewer lines. Inflow means illegal hookups like basement sump pumps or foundation drains that are hooked up to the sanitary sewer. This additional sewer flow from infiltration and inflow occurs when it rains. Additional flow from groundwater and stormwater in our sanitary sewer lines can add to the existing capacity problems throughout the MWRA's regional sewer system. Capacity problems in the MWRA's regional sewer system can result in untreated combined sewage discharges into the ill wife brook. I want to thank the town meeting for giving me a few moments to raise awareness about this, and I ask that you please vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take Mr. Leonie next.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I have questions that pertain to both Articles 53 and 54, so I'm going to address them to the Chair and to hopefully Mr. Roddimer, and if please is the Chair, I would like to have him answer questions on both. The same questions apply to both articles, so if he could just address both and save us a little time.
Sure, I'll allow that, yeah.
The first question is how many miles or feet of pipe does this cover for each year? And how does that compare to the past years?
Mr. Roddimer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Michael Roddimer, Director of Public Works. On the water side, the funding that we looking to borrow allows us to replace approximately one mile of water main annually. On the sewer side, it's not so much a linear feet of pipe standard that we look to repair. We have set up a program where we divided the town into about 13 sections and every year we look to make improvements to one of those 13 sections of town. We do televised inspections. We, we do, we look for the worst situations of groundwater infiltration or structural defects. We design repairs and then construct them. So the funding we receive allows us to maintain one of those 13 sections in town and annually we rotate through those over a 13 year period and then start again.
So second question is what's the overall plan for replacement of the entire system? How many feet per year or how many years?
Mr. Roddimer.
Thank you, Michael Roddimer, Director of Public Works. As I stated, on the water side, we're currently replacing a mile a year, but I that's something I've, in the engineering department, I've been discussing, we would like to ramp that up to to two miles a year. We have about 130 miles of pipe in the town, and I believe it would be a much better goal to have pipe that's about 70 years old if we were able to replace two miles a year rather than 130 years old. On the sewer side, it'll just be a ongoing annual inspection and maintenance throughout the town. We don't necessarily replace the sewer pipe. When possible, we line it or repair it in place.
Okay, the last question is we've been budgeting the same amount for as many years as I can remember, more or less, with minimal increases for inflation and higher costs. Is this amount adequate to complete the plan with these higher costs factored in?
Thank you, Michael Roddimer, Director of Public Works. On the water side, we have been bumping that number up a little bit just to be able to maintain the one mile replacement goals. Obviously, if we wanted to bump that to two miles, that would, number would need to be significantly increased. On the sewer side, the number has actually come down a little bit as, because we're entering into the end of that first 13 year cycle and we don't need to do inspections or design as much because we know where our problems are, but as we start program over again, and as you've mentioned, costs are increasing, I imagine those costs will start to creep up over years as well.
Is there a plan to ask the Finance Committee for more money?
Mr. Roddimer.
Well, we will be looking at that for future budget cycles, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Roddimer. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Wait, thank you, Mr. Leonie. Let's take Ms. Murray next.
Caroline Murray, Precinct 12. I move that we terminate debate.
We have motion to terminate debate. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mr. Hamlin. So let's take, let's open voting for termination of debate of Article 53. So if you Okay, so voting is starting to open in waves. If you are in favor of terminating debate on Article 53, vote yes. If you want to continue debate on Article 53, vote no. And the waves are still opening up, so if you see a message that your voting controls will be enabled in the next wave or in two more waves, just sit tight and within several seconds, that'll open up for you. Okay, all waves of voting should now be open. This is a vote on terminating debate on Article 53. If you're in favor of terminating debate, vote yes. If you want to continue debate, vote no. And this is a two thirds vote. 216 votes cast now. Just wait a little bit longer. So several folks have been active in the portal have not voted yet, so if you haven't voted, please get your votes in. And if you're having trouble in the portal, although there haven't been any, I haven't seen any widespread complaints or any complaints about voting in the portal tonight. But if you're having trouble, you can always use the Q and A to submit your vote. Let's just wait another Let's just wait another 15 seconds. 10 seconds until we close voting on termination debate on Article 53, five seconds. Okay, let's close voting. Okay, debate is terminated. 209 votes in the affirmative, 11 and negative three abstentions. Let's go straight to voting on the main motion for Article 53 appropriation for financing of construction or of of construction of sewers and sewerage facilities. And this is a two thirds vote on the main motion. Voting should be opening up in waves. And just the vote language is while we're waiting for votes to come in. Vote yes if you're in favor of the sum of $800,000 being appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction or reconstruction of sewers and sewerage facilities. Inflow or infiltration reduction or system rehabilitation, including costs incidental and related thereto. There's more, but you can read that in the annotated warrant under Article 53 for the details. Okay, all waves of voting should be open and we have 218 votes in, we're still missing about 15 from recently active members. So this is wait a bit, a little bit longer. If you have not been able to get your vote in yet, please get it in. And if you have trouble in the portal, you could always use the Q and A to submit your vote that way. Or you can contact Ms. Brazil. Okay, so another 30 seconds. Until we close voting on Article 53. 20 seconds. Is the main motion. It is a two thirds vote. 10 seconds until we close voting on Article 53. 5 seconds. And let's close voting. And it passes with wow, 100% of the vote, 223 and the affirmative. And that's all. Okay, so we'll just wait to cycle through the screens here. And then after we're done seeing, displaying all the votes across all the precincts, we'll move on to Article 54. Okay, so let's open up Article 54 appropriation for financing of construction or reconstruction of water mains and water facilities. And this article was on the consent agenda initially. It was removed by Ms. Band, so if Ms. Band is interested in speaking on this, happy to bring her up. See, if we're not able to bring her up right away, we can at least, we can bring up someone who is waiting in the speaking queue. Let's bring up Mr. Jockett. Oh. He's no longer in the queue. Let's take Mr. Keplin.
Hi, thank you, Mark Keplin, Precinct 9. I got a communication from a concerned resident about discrepancies he's seen in water bills amongst residents. And there's a few people, including a member of town meeting who've got, showing virtually no water usage. And so he's curious how that could be, you know, and for a long period of time, I don't know if they're using bottled water to shower or bathe, but they're not showing up as, as using hardly any water at all. And I've got a copy of a water bill that I can share.
Yeah, I'm not sure if town meetings can be the best place to kind of try to debug what happened in that particular case, but we'll bring up Mr. Roddimer briefly if this is something that you've seen like wide, as a widespread issue or might have some insights into.
Thank you, Michael Roddimer, Director of Public Works. We do from time to time see weird things at properties with, with water use and trends, and we do look to contact those residences and get in the house and look at the meters. We also are going through a meter replacement project, so if there are we will be getting those replaced.
Yeah, this sounds like a like residents should be contacting the Director of Public Works, Mr. Roddimer, for further questions or the town manager who can send those questions.
Okay, I can email that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else in the speaking queue, let's proceed to voting on Article 54. Okay, so if your wave is up and active for voting, please go ahead and vote. This is the main motion. This is not a termination of debate vote. We're just going straight to voting on the main motion because we've exhausted our speaker queue. So if you are in favor of the main motion of Article 54, the appropriation for financing of construction or reconstruction of water mains and water facilities, vote yes. If you are not in favor of that appropriation, vote no. And just a reminder that the, as we're waiting for the votes to roll in, this was a, an article that was on the consent agenda. If, if, if you if you held an article so that it's removed, it was removed from the consent agenda, please try to be available to speak on it. So we can understand why it was not handled in a more efficient way through the consent agenda. Thank you. Okay, we have 215 votes in, still waiting for about 16 recently active members in the portal. And this is, this is a two thirds vote for this appropriation. Okay, the number of votes cast is starting to taper off. Let's just give another 20 seconds. If you have trouble voting in the portal, you could always, 15 seconds, you could always vote through the Q and A. 10 seconds until we close voting on Article 54. 5 seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And Article 54 passes with 100% of the vote, 218 in the affirmative. We'll just wait for these screens to cycle through. And when that's done, we will move ahead to Article 57. Still waiting for the display of the voting screens across precincts. And while we're waiting for that, Article 57 was also on the consent agenda. It was held by Mr. Wagner. So if Mr. Wagner wants to get on the speaker queue, you can get ready to queue him up when we take on Article 57. This is an appropriation for town celebrations and events. Actually, before we take Mr. Wagner, I do want to give Mr. Foscat an opportunity to speak to the vote, the Finance Committee report, vote on Article 57, and then we'll go to Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Charles Foscat, Precinct 10 and Chair of the Finance Committee. This is a vote for celebrations and honorifics that we routinely have. We haven't had Town Day in a couple of years because of COVID. There's nothing exceptional in, in this article.
Okay, so let's, let's take Mr. Wagner now to speak on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. I wanted to make two points here. One of them is that Town Day is actually September 13th, 1766 commemoration of Uncle Sam's birthday. Uncle Sam was born in Arlington, and I hope that we'll commemoration of Uncle Sam's birthday. Uncle Sam was born in Arlington, and I hope that we'll consider putting his name back on our Town Day. The second point I'd like to make is all the time that I lived in the town when I was young, and then since I moved back in the nineties, we had fireworks display on Town Day in the evening, which people loved. And I hope that we will consider putting that back. At one point, we raised funds from the community, and we seem to have completely ceased. And perhaps in celebration of coming back from COVID, we could start having the fireworks with our Town Day slash Uncle Sam Day. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we have no more speakers. So let's proceed directly to voting on Article fifty-seven. So let's open voting. And this is a majority vote on appropriating funds for town celebrations and events such as Town Day. And while you're waiting to vote or waiting after having voted, I'll just point out that Samuel Wilson's not only the namesake for, or the inspiration for Uncle Sam, but also Sam Wilson of the Avengers Falcon and later the Captain America. So this is Article fifty-seven appropriation for town celebrations and events such as Town Day. Or as Mr. Wagner points out, Samuel Wilson Town Day for Okay, we have about two hundred votes in, still waiting for several more. If you haven't voted yet, please try to get your vote in. All waves of precincts should be able to vote now. Okay, we have some votes coming into the Q and A. Okay, so let's just wait another just wait another twenty seconds until we close voting on Article fifty-seven appropriation for town celebrations and events. Fifteen seconds. Ten seconds. Five seconds until we close voting. And let's go ahead and close voting. And Article fifty-seven passes, two hundred eighteen votes in the affirmative, one in the negative. And we will wait for all, the display of all the precincts votes. Since this is the main motion. And after this, we will take up Article sixty appropriation for blue bikes. I will note that it is ten forty-nine PM. Let's see how far we can get into Article sixty. Okay, so let's let's go to Article sixty. This is also a Finance Committee article at the request of the Department of Planning and Community Development. So let's start with Mr. Foscat and see if he wants to speak to the to the Finance Committee report on this, and then maybe we can bring up Ms. Rate, Director of the Planning and Community Development Department, Mr. Foscat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andy O'Court, a member of the Finance Committee and a town meeting member. Charles Foscat, Precinct ten, and a town meeting member will speak for the Finance Committee on this article.
Okay. Who did you want to bring up for that?
I'm sorry, Andy La Court, former select.
Oh, okay. Ms. La Court.
Annie La Court, Precinct fifteen. Can you hear me, Greg?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so the majority of the committee, the Finance Committee were persuaded that this is an appropriate investment in an important mode of transportation that serves as an alternative to cars and fits in with the town's effort to combat climate change. The request is for funds to support the continuation of the Blue Bike program and expand the number of bikes and locations. Although this program has seen extensive use, the ten K or so trips don't reach the volume necessary to eliminate all costs to the town. Their request is for funds to subsidize ridership for the next two years. At the end of that two years, the program will be evaluated again. The expectation is that with the additional bikes available, the program will meet the trip threshold required to eliminate the cost to the town under the contract with Lyft subsidiary motive. In any case, this is a one-time allocation and not a permanent increase in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. La Court. And so this was on the consent agenda originally. It was removed by Mr. Keplin, and Mr. Keplin is also in the pole position in the speaker queue. So let's take Mr. Keplin next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Keplin, Precinct nine. There's no shame in failure, unlike pouring good money after bad. Twenty percent of businesses fail within one year, half within five years. Lime exited from the Boston market should have been a red flag to people as their shift to motorized bikes and scooters only. So this, this is not going to be a sustained adventure. It's going to cost more money. Initially, we were told just twenty thousand dollars two years ago, and we would have six stations forever, thanks to a hundred and eighty thousand from the state. Now it's back to the well for a hundred thousand dollars for two more years. I think it's best to cut our losses, sell the stations, and maybe reinvest later with e-bikes, which is what the market is heading towards. In fact, Lime only offers e-bikes and scooters. New York City is on their second generation of e-bikes. And we should get some money for these obsolete stations while we can. Also, I have a problem with the e, these bikes, because there's no accommodation for disabled people. Here's public money being spent on something specifically for able-bodied people, and there's no no trikes, no, no electrified bikes or anything to support the disabled. So I sent out an email to, to members of the town meeting, and I hope they had a chance to look at it. And I feel there's many other ways that a hundred thousand dollars could better serve residents, like additional street lighting at pedestrian crosswalks, on-demand pedestrian crossing lights. These would all improve safety. And the other issue is, there's some funny stuff with the, with the federal government. So a lot of the funding is under the CMAC program, which is for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement. That money is for transportation that replaces motorized fuel transport. And in fact, a lot of these bikes are getting used for recreational use, which is not covered under CO2 reduction funding. And also, you know, even the recent bike path expansions, again, they're recreational. They don't serve much residences like the Greenway and the proposed Mystic Valley path. You know, the, the original Minuteman Bike Way is fantastic. It serves residents, it serves schools, it serves going to businesses, but we're getting farther and farther afield from that. So I'm going to suggest
We're also getting a bit far afield from the scope as well, so.
So I, I, I hope we can just cut our losses and, you know, the people all over want e-bikes. They want motorized transportation, and these bikes are not going to get any more popular going forward. They're going to get less popular. People in Arlington have enough money to buy their own bikes. In fact, the yearly annual fee for these bikes are a hundred and twenty, twenty dollars a year. You can buy a brand-new bike at Walmart for that, or get any number of used bikes, or even free bikes in a bike lock and satisfy the need for two-wheeled transportation. So thank you for your concern and interest. I hope people vote no on this.
Great, thank you. It's like Mr. McNeil next, and we are getting close to eleven o'clock. This may be the last speaker of the night. Mr. McNeil? Name and precinct, please.
Hi, Adam McNeil, Precinct six. So I'm a member of the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, which was asked to vote on this. And I was actually possibly surprisingly a fairly bit hesitant at this at first, even though it has some undeniable societal benefits. And we actually had quite a long discussion, and I eventually changed my mind for a few reasons that I think are important now that it's been pulled off the consent agenda. First, something that helped me wrap my head around this a little bit is that I think it's rather misleading to consider this as a subsidy. As BlueBikes, first off, it provides a direct service to the town, and it doesn't make a profit off of Arlington, which is the reason we're doing this in the first place. As it currently stands, it's money back into the pocket of working, of the production of the maintenance of these. It's, there's no profit margin on this a hundred thousand dollars that we'd be putting in over the next two years. In, I kind of, or not, I kind of, I do think of this now as payment for services rendered to the town, very similar to how the town pays a contract for external printer maintenance. Then, of course, we have the question, well, now they've established as a service, is it actually useful? Is it actually something we're using as an increasing in use? Is this something for which we should be paying a contract? And the answer to that is yes, it's being used. Last year, we averaged about one point three rides per bike per day, which is a slight, actually, a decent increase over the year before, which is the first year. And so that's a good trend. And there's also a fairly substantial portion of those rides that either started or ended in a neighboring town, especially Cambridge. So that's either indicating probably either commuting or day trips that happen to bring people into Arlington Center. And you can see that if you're standing out there and looking on the bike path or around, you can see how the bikes move around. So for reference, two trips per day is when Blue Bike breaks even. So we're approaching that, although we are obviously a bit away still. And as Ms. La Court mentioned, when the two years are up, we reevaluate based on, hey, have we actually reached those two trips per day? And if the trends go, we'll be pretty close to that. And that's, then we don't have to subsidize more or a lot less, or as I would say, pay more, not necessarily subsidize. And then, yeah, so that's the two main points that changed my mind. I'd also like to bring up that there's a fundamental difference between the quite well-established blue bikes that have done successfully for a decade plus in some of our neighboring municipalities and Lime, which obviously had a shifting business model and was not as, it was also fundamentally different being dockless per stock. There's different costs involved with that. So I do want to say, urge people to support this. It has some in, in good improvement, of good societal benefits in reducing traffic and emissions, and you're opening up exercise and things like that, but also it's not a waste of money on the town's part in that regard. It's a service that is being provided, a service that's useful to the residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. McNeil. We do have a point of order from Ms. Weber. Let's take that before we close things up for the night. Name and precinct, please, and your point of order.
I don't know how you get to terminate debate other than point of order. That's what I wanted to do is motion to adjourn, actually, is what I wanted to do. But I don't know where you do that, so I had to do.
Okay, okay. So before we entertain that motion to adjourn, do we have any notices of reconsideration for any articles that we voted on tonight? That folk, if you voted on the prevailing side of an article, but you would like to give notice of reconsideration if there might be new information that we should take up in the future to reconsider that article? Any notices, Mr. Foscat?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Charles Foscat, Precinct ten, Chair of Finance Committee. Having voted on the prevailing side on Articles fifty, fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-seven, I would like to assert a notice of reconsideration of those articles.
Okay, noted. I'm sure Ms. Brazil can take note of those. And any other notices of reconsider, let's enable, raise hands in Zoom for any notices of reconsideration on any of the articles that we voted on tonight. And seeing none, let's get back to Ms. Weber's motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second from any raised, please raise your hand in Zoom if you object to adjourn. It is eleven oh one PM. And seeing none, it's unanimous. And so we are now adjourned. We will reconvene on Wednesday, May eighteenth at eight PM. Thanks, everyone.